Frank Ferrari, Marshall Golf.
Here.
Lilly Junkins.
Here.
Gary Keat.
Here.
Jim Alphajo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moreno.
Here.
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
This evening, we have our prayer and our pledge by council member.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together, pray for guidance in the matters at hand, and ask that you show us how to conduct our work with spirit and joy, enthusiasm, make this a great city. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have a special presentation by our mayor if the individuals from Hope Inc. would come forward, please.
I'm going to do it from over here so that way the people online can hear it as well. A proclamation, whereas sexual harassment, abuse, and assault are widespread problems, and whereas, in the United States alone, nearly 1 in 5 women and 1 in 67 men have been raped at some point in their lives, and at least 1 in 6 boys and 1 in 4 girls is sexually abused before the age of 18, and whereas, sexual harassment, assault, and abuse happens in all communities, and that includes online spaces as we are spending more and more of our time online, whether that's for work, school, or entertainment, and whereas, unfortunately, with this increase in virtual connection comes an increase in online abuse and harassment, and whereas, consent and boundaries can be violated online in a number of ways, and the trauma of online abuse is all too real for many survivors, and whereas, the theme of this year's campaign is, we can build safe online spaces, and whereas, the campaign calls on us to create online spaces that are built on the foundational values of practicing consent, keeping kids safe, and supporting survivors, and whereas, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and Hope Inc. notes that this is a time to draw attention to the prevalence of sexual assault and educate individuals and communities about how to prevent it. Now therefore, I, E. Ryan Kennedy, Mayor of the City of Clarksburg, proclaim April 2021 as Sexual Assault Harassment Month in the City of Clarksburg, and encourage people to follow with Hope Inc. in joining the efforts of national, state, and local partners, and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to prevent online abuse. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and have caused the official seal of the City of Clarksburg to be fixed here to this 15th day of April 2021, E. Ryan Kennedy, Mayor of Clarksburg, Annette M. Wright, City Clerk.
I'm smiling, I have no idea. (laughter)
We would just like to thank the City Council, Hartford Police Department, and everybody for their support for our campaign.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Approve of the minutes of the conference work session of March 25, 2021?
Still moving. Second. No objection, the minutes are agreed to.
Petitions, communications, and public hearings, John Medea, 115 Hartland Avenue, wishes to address council concerning mobile food vendors.
I'm John Medea, I live at 115 Hartland Avenue in Clarksburg, West Virginia, and I just got a few comments on the, uh... the ordinance, uh... I don't really think we need a commissary, uh... Your trucks are set up, refrigerators are, uh... Passed the health inspection, plug it in at night, you got a cooler, and you can prepare out of your food. It mentioned, uh... A noise.
Can you refer me to a page, sir, please?
Sure. Page 4, F. It addresses, um, noise. I think you should have a decibel level where you can come and check it with a handheld device.
Which, uh...
Device.
Which paragraph?
F.
What's that?
F, okay. All right, thank you. I don't really think that you should leave it up to someone's opinion if a generator's loud, you know, put a decibel level. Page 4I mentions, um... I'm sorry, page 5I. Insurance, I would just suggest that you have commercial insurance, because if you run a food truck on your personal auto property, you're going to, they're not going to pay for it, and they should have, uh, business liability, because if they're parked on city property and something happens, they're going to sue everybody that's there, so I would suggest you have your vendors, the trucks should have a general liability policy along with insurance policy. It speaks of food truck rallies on page 1, 4. It mentions a gathering more than five trucks, uh, which may or may not have been coordinated or advertised, um, you could be sanctioned for that, but then on page 3, uh, 2B, says maximum numbers of food trucks, no more than 10 may operate in a location unless you have a special event license. I don't have a problem if you've got 10 trucks, I want more trucks, you might want a taco, your kid might want to shave dice, and your wife wants a steak sandwich, but, uh... And then what happens if you limit it at five? If we're sitting at Jackson Square and here comes the sixth truck, who are you going to ride up? All of us or the sixth truck? I don't know. And, uh, page 5, signage, uh... It talked about, I think it's six inches that the sign could be projected from your vehicle, most of the banners that you see that say hot dogs, barbecue, they're 12 inches, it's a cloth, uh, banner. And it talked about overnight parking, I, um, if, I think if you're renting, let's say if you rent a monthly spot at a, at a meter, who cares if you park it there or not, you're paying for it, and I don't know if that was just you didn't want off, on-street parking, but if I'm renting a parking spot and I park it over there or not, I mean, that's why I'm renting it for, I'm renting it 24/7, you're paying a monthly fee, but, uh... That were my main concerns on it, that, uh, just keep everybody on a local playing field. I don't care what you charge me a month, whether it's 50 a year or 50 a month, that's not my big issue, but, uh... I don't, I just think if, maybe next time when we have something like this, consult the people that are into business and, because this came from Huntington, I don't care about Huntington and what they're doing, I mean, they might have some different issues or universe in town, uh, where they may have more trucks than we have, but, uh... It's just a pleasure doing business in Clarksburg, and, uh, them were my concerns as a food truck vendor, that you might want to inject into your ordinance, and thank you for letting me speak.
Sir, um, thank you, sir, I want to thank you for coming and bringing those, uh, those references to our, our intention, I'd like, I'd like to ask our, uh, city manager if we give the city attorney later, and if we, if this does pass on first reading tonight, then maybe we could bring up an amendment on second reading to, to fix some of the things that were raised tonight.
Brad Morris, 503 Stanley Avenue, wishes to address council concerning the sidewalk from Nutterford to Broad Oaks, demolition, and certificate of occupancy.
I'll, I'll try to keep the timer on, the first one's a sidewalk that goes from Nutterford to Broad Oaks, that is an issue, and I thought about some place where they can apply money, I've almost hit someone on that road multiple times, they walk up wearing dark clothes, they're always on the side of the guardrail, does everybody know what I'm talking about? Someone's going to get hit, it's, it's going to happen if it hasn't yet, and there could be a sidewalk put on the right, I, I don't know, I don't care how it gets done, but that is something that should be looked into, because it has traveled heavily, like, I mean, almost all the time when you're driving, you see one, I mean, I've seen people pushing babies up in strollers on the side of the road, and, um, it makes sense, because, you know, that's a pretty decent exchange there, but I think that that should be looked at as a good place to add some public safety, um, I don't know how high you should get down there if you're walking, and a lot of people do walk, but anyways, someone's going to get hit one day, I hope it's not me that does it, but I don't want that to happen to anybody, um, the demolition thing, and I'm going to try to tie that in, um, I think the demolition program has been awesome, I just want to say that I've reiterated that here before, it takes a lot of the inventory out, it makes it so people are willing to invest in the neighboring houses, for me as an investor, these are the things I look at, so I just want to emphasize, I think that's been one of the better programs the city has done, I'm very appreciative of that, um, I just recently, like, went on to some of the Facebook stuff, which is a nightmare, and I, if you guys engage on there, have fun with that, um, I know a lot of you guys do, but, woof, but anyways, one of the points that people bring up on there is why don't people, instead of tearing them down, invest back into them, I can tell you, because I do it, I've done it at least five to six times, I'm in the middle of just coming off of a project where I bought the church in North Street, and if anybody wants to drive by it and see what I've done over there, feel free, that was a place that the city had to mow, because they weren't mowing it, I've been mowing it, I made them into a really nice project, it, it looks way better, I mean, it's all my personal opinion, but, you know, I put a new roof on it, I completely redid the interiors, they're a lot better condition than they were, same thing's about to happen on Marshall Street, I bought a property over there, I'm going to start that project here in the next week or two, I'm doing it, you have to do math, and it's what it's worth to invest into them versus what they're worth after, you can't invest 100,000 into a property and it ended up being only worth 60,000, 70,000 dollars, so it, it's just math, if I think I can make money on it, I, and the other thing that's separate, I actually like doing it, most people can't stand it, but I, I actually enjoy the process, I enjoy, as you guys have engaged before, I like difficult things, I'm a difficult person, but, um, I enjoy the difficulty of it, but, that being said, there's also incentive involved, and when I have to go through these permits, which are fine, I'm not here to complain about the permits today, but you go through the permits, I had to get stuff rezoned, I had to do this, you have a bunch of hoops you have to jump through that make it difficult, I don't know if the city can do anything about that, I'm not coming in specific on inspections, but I do want to talk about the COs, the Certificate of Occupancies, when that was first brought up, and, and this, the only reason I'm addressing it today was this council that put in the fees for, that added fees, and I spoke at that against it, and I think it barely passed, but when it was initially put in place, those Certificate of Occupancies were made specifically, so my understanding was with code enforcement was those were to get access in to see the troubled landlords versus the untroubled ones, it wasn't to generate revenue, and I know that it costs the city, I don't feel like I should have to pay, like, I have no incentive, those certificate occupancies are only negative to me, they cost me money, they cost me time, and I'm going to get hit up with like about 10 things I'm going to have to do that are going to cost me money, that I'm going to have to get permits for, if you run, like, HUD housing, which makes you not have to get a certificate of occupancy, you don't have to pay the 25 dollars, because it's considered a inspection, if you get an outside inspection, so if you have any kind of city, um, inspection outside of the code enforcement, then you're accepted from that, so if, if we want to incentivize more of that, then that's what we're engaged in, that is what happens, that, that's, so I'm just saying, because I'm out there on my own, I have to pay it, and other people that are inside the government system do not have to pay the 25 dollar fee, I would appreciate if council would just take a look at that policy, look at the incentives it creates, if I have 30 units, that's 750 dollars every other year, because I only have to do it every other year, which is 350 dollars, that's not a lot, but I also have to pay the fire fee, I also have to pay my BNO, um, and I pay double the property tax of a regular homeowner, like, I'm paying other things, and it's just, it's not the 25 dollars, if it would just make it go away, then it'd be like, whatever, here's your check, but it's that combined with every, it doesn't provide incentive, and, um, anyways, and it wasn't on there initially, and it was this council with this body that initiated those fees, so I want to address them before we have a new council come in one more time before it happens, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hey, thank you.
And, and as to the, uh, as the sidewalk issue you raised, um, could we check with the town of Nutterford, the city, who owns that particular real estate he's talking about, because if it's in Clarksburg, I'd like to do something.
Well, the, the, uh... Once, once you hit that, uh, that sign there, it's, it's out, just past Hayman Highway, then, then again, you go out of the city.
Yeah, Nutterford took that road in a year ago, a while back.
Yes, yes, sir.
What I'm saying is, if that territory that he's talking about is in Clarksburg, then we ought to do something about it, if not, we ought to speak with Nutterford to see if they'll do something.
I asked Nutterford, they said, "Oh, yeah." So...
Well, my point is, let's find out who, which city it's in, and then I, I support whichever city it is.
I know they're green, right, I was in Clarksburg, that's what we call it, so, when, I mean, I don't know.
The town of Nutterford annexed that roadway up to the top of, I'm certain I was in working when they did, you remember that?
Yeah.
That they took that, the roadway in, so they would have a right-of-way on both sides for a sidewalk, as far as I know.
I went down there, too, but it's a pop, you know, like.
But, but the point is, let's, let's help, let's help find a solution here, so that we can have a sidewalk, whether it's us that does it or somebody else, let's figure it out.
Kenneth Tyson, Mr. Taco, 53 and a half West Main Street, wishes to address council concerning the mobile food vendors.
Good evening, everyone, so I'm going to address some of the issues, and a lot of them are going to be the same ones that Mr. Medea has already addressed, but, uh, I'm going to address, uh, section 5F with the noise and specific to the generator, applicable noise ordinance, it says, the specific verbiage is, "In the opinion of the permitting authority." I, who is, who has the right to have an opinion of if your noise is louder, is, is too loud or not, I, I think there should be a specific decibels or some kind of like, just like he said, a meter that would, um, that would represent what the, what that, uh, excessiveness is, um, interpretation, interpretation of the law should be based on, should not be based on someone's opinion, um, the next thing would be section 5, letter J, signage, uh, the banners and flags, they bring pizzazz to, to the coming of the food trucks, when you come to the food trucks, you got these flags, it, it looks nice, and it, it brings an ambient that's, that's, you know, kind of fun, so, um, one of the things that you said, the, the, the ordinance doesn't allow flags or banners, they only allow a little, I think you called it a little, I don't know what you called it, just a, a small little thing, and it, it doesn't make sense, uh, so, I, I think that we need to, I, I agree that we shouldn't impede traffic and, and pedestrians and things like that, that's absolutely not, not correct, but, you know, I don't think that local businesses, just because they're brick and mortar here on Main Street, are allowed to have great big banners out, and we are not, we are not allowed to, and we generate as much business, if not more than they do, and bring in people into this city, so I think that's, that's a, uh, something we need to look at. Another section was, uh, section 5I, or actually, I think it's L, 5L, for the insurance, it's important to look closely at this section, if a vehicle is used for a food truck, they should have commercial insurance on the vehicle, also, the vehicle owner should have the business insured as well, which is the same thing that, uh, that Joe was saying, so I, I think that that's, that's, uh, important, it, not only does it, it protect the business owner, but it protects the city as well if they are doing something on a city property, and which I do, and, um, let's see, one of the other things to think of, too, is when you, when you state, um, only motor vehicle insurance, that could construe to as just liability insurance, or the minimal insurance the state requires, and that doesn't cover much, and it's not going to help them, because if they are in some kind of an accident or something, it will not, they, they will void that, the, uh, the policy and not cover. The next thing was section 6E, um, permit expiration, um, expiring due to remodeling of the food truck, the word remodeling, um, needs to be defined, what exactly is remodeling? Is it putting new signage on the outside of it, is it putting, adding a shelf to your food truck, you know, there's, remodeling could be anything, so that needs to be discussed as what exactly is, you know, what do you consider remodeling, and what is, is not, because if I, every time I put a new shelf in, or if I change the, the screens on my truck, because the, the screens are getting dirty or something, um, you know, it, it's not going to make sense to pay 50 bucks every, every two weeks or so. The, the last thing that I have at hand to this, or last thing I just wanted to say, you know, I'd like to thank the council for the progress that has been made on this ordinance, um, it is a huge step forward, but that being said, I don't think it's complete enough to have a first reading without looking into the mention changes, um, after speaking with other food truck vendors, or owners, um, it, I think that this, that it should be, the reading should be postponed until the corrections are made, um, if you approve this tonight without having these corrections, you're leaving loopholes in it that could hurt the city as well as hurt the vendors, so it's something that you guys should probably look into, especially the insurance, um, that's huge, and I think the, 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 when the permits are given, the, the, whoever is the receiving authority, whether it's the finance department, whoever, they need to have in hand a copy of that insurance, it, it's important. I think that the council might also want to consider sitting down with the, with your local food truck vendors, myself, um, the big kihuna back there, as, as well as, uh, there's a kettle corn guy that lives here in town that, that, as well, that's pretty active, um, things like that, and, and just talk to us, we, we've been doing this for a while, I've, I've been doing it for about six months, but I'm doing it six days a week, so, trust me, I, I see the in and outs of it, and, uh, I think it's important that, you know, if you guys want to sit down a, a day and talk some of this stuff over, and, and come up with suggestions that are concrete, instead of, you know, following some city down, you know, 100 miles away, instead of what's currently, what's really viable here, you know, let, let's do that, I, I open the door to you guys to sit down and let's talk about some of this stuff, and, um, that's it, I thank you guys, and, like I said, you guys are doing a good job, but there's some questions in, in hand with this ordinance. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark Schaefer, 211 North Sixth Street, wishes to address council concerning strategic planning.
Thank you. 14 years ago, when I was elected to City Council, the first thing I asked for was a copy of all the economic development plans the city had done over the past 20 years. Many of my fellow council members asked me why I needed to look at these studies, they said no one else reads them, I was shocked at the attitude, in essence, that these studies were worthless, I realized this is an indication of the poor planning the City of Clarksburg has done over the past scores of years, I wanted to see Clarksburg do a strategic plan like Bridgeport does, in 2010, council went to a conference in Denver, Colorado, and I set up a meeting with the nationally recognized firm of Hyatt Palma, we met with Doyle Hyatt and Dolores Palma, this is a company that has done work with over 1,000 cities across the nation to help them develop their downtowns, we invited them to Clarksburg to meet with council and look at our city over, unfortunately, council chose to go to a cheaper alternative for economic development, instead of using a nationally recognized, super-qualified company, they decided on hiring a local professor to help us do a strategic planning, unfortunately, council wasn't into doing that either, we scheduled a meeting at a Saturday at Senior Citizen Center, and we were all supposed to do a SWOT analysis and be prepared to discuss it at the meeting, this was a public meeting, only three people showed up, myself, a former mayor of the city, and a citizen, so nothing really got done, then council decided to have a meeting in the council chambers, and we discussed it again, I was one of only, I was one, the only one of seven who showed up with the assignment completed, I'm going to give Annette a copy of that SWOT analysis I prepared November the 6th, 2010, and anybody who wants to see what I felt was going on in 2010, they can, Annette, you can see a lot of things that needed to be done are still not, uh, accomplished, however, we've made some inroads, for that, I commend the councils for the last 11 years, I don't know if Clarksburg currently has a stra- strategic plan, I didn't see it on the website for the city, we need to develop a strategic plan, involve the citizens in the development, 2007, many people were calling for the demolition of the Palace Center, Vendellia paid to have a market feasibility analysis done, which I have a copy of, which we used to get someone to take over the Palace Center, the same could be done with other buildings in downtown Clarksburg, we, and I believe the Palace Center is our top-paying property tax building in Clarksburg right now, so, you know, I think we need to develop a strategic plan, we need to put it on the website, we need to hold ourselves accountable, and I'd like to give you one word of advice, every councilman I ever met thought that once they got 800 votes, they'd become geniuses, it's not true, you're not a landscape planner or an urban designer because you got 800 votes, there's a lot of good people in Clarksburg that have experience that can help you out with this, and if we work the city together, we can, we can do a lot, thank you very much and good luck.
Mr. Schaefer, if I may, have you made an appointment with the finance department and city manager to set up a payment plan for the emergency demolition that was done on Pike Street, sir?
No, uh, I'm waiting on some paperwork from the finance department right now, and as soon as that paperwork's done, we're going to have a meeting, uh, me and the city manager talked about that, and I'm waiting on that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions?
Thank you very much. City managers' report and update.
For the manager's office, we received 119 applications for the position of public works laborer, applicants were screened, and 22 candidates will be interviewed next week, interviews were conducted last week for the position of plan operator, and Stacy Souls happily accepted the position, his start date is May 10th, and welcome to the team, the beautification committee met with sculpture Bill Hopin, he is going to design a sculpture for the park on the corner of West Pike and South Third, interviews for the position of director of economic development will begin next week, and this morning, we welcomed a new business in Clarksburg, the Hair Way to Beauty Salon and Barber Shop had their ribbon cutting ceremony today, they are located at 431 Clark Street, Clark Street, in the thirty-one Clark Street, Clark Street in the Glen Elk community. Welcome to our great city. From the police department, testing for police officers will take place the next two Saturdays, April seventeenth and April twenty-fourth, beginning at nine AM at the Robert Seabird High School. Officers will begin training and certification on May twenty-fourth for the new drone, and new body cameras and in-car video camera systems, uh, will be installed next week. From the fire department, on Easter Sunday, the department experienced one of the largest residential fires in the past fifteen, the last fifteen years. Three occupied homes were destroyed, six structures were damaged, and five, five vehicles totaled. The state fire marshal is investigating the cause of the fire, and no injuries were reported. Today, we had sworn in our new fire chief, Steve Police. Congratulations. Along with Captains Walter Knight, Stephen McIntyre, and Brian Hall, and Lieutenants Adam Police, and Chris Runner, and firefighter Andrew Hardy. The process has begun to fill the, uh, to fill the Training and Safety Officer, Fire Marshal, and Mechanics positions. From the finance department, proposals for the financing of the second ladder truck have been received. Council will consider awarding the bid next month. Updates to the city's website for clarification on BNO tax requirements were completed. The department has been reviewing ordinances and looking at ways for Clarksburg to be more business-friendly. A quarterly BNO tax assessments will be issued next week for all businesses that neglected to file and pay their BNO taxes for any quarters in the year 2018 and 2019. If not paid within thirty days, liens will be filed and sent out to outside collection agencies. From city parks, the pickleball group will meet with the park board to discuss improvements of the VA Park Courts. The Clarksburg Visitors Bureau is planning an event to be held at the AMP in June, and work continues to prepare for the opening of a splash zone for the season. From the Robinson Grand, the center was proud to successfully completed two public events and one wedding with the highest attendance since March 2020. Weekends are fully booked for the rest of 2021, and they are now accepting, uh, reservations for year 2022. For code enforcement, the, the department issued fifty-three building permits for a total project cost of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Twenty-one notice of violations were issued, zero citations were written, six structures were condemned, three demo structures were re-boarded, along with nine condemned structures. Nineteen residential and seven commercial inspections were performed, twenty-five notice of violations were resolved, three properties were removed from the condemnation list, and four vehicles were tagged, and five signs were removed. Animal control responded to twenty-six calls for service with seven animals taken to HCAC. For Public Works, the sanitary department installed two hundred and six feet of new sanitary sewer pipe, along with responding to twenty-one sewer complaints. A new catch basin was installed on Monticello and Main Street. Public Works has picked up over sixty-three tons in week one of the spring cleanup, and forty-one tons in week two. Fourteen tons of yard waste was collected, and twenty-five tons of compost were screened. Crews demolished six nineteen and three thirty-six Monticello Avenue, along with the three structures on Levy Court. The twenty twenty-one, or the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one paving project is complete, uh, and ready to go out to bid. For the wastewater treatment plant, the plant treated one hundred and ninety-seven million gallons of wastewater in March with no violations to report. The plant also received two hundred and thirty-eight, correction, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty gallons of septicage for a revenue of twelve thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-six cents, and work has begun to replace the perforated roller on the sludge press. That's the end of my report.
Unfinished business. Consideration of first reading of an ordinance of the city of Clarksburg to amend Section 745 regarding tax credits to reenact the same and added tax credit for a new business location with construction costs.
Mr. Mayor, this was previously tabled. I want to make a motion that we take this off the table.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All in favor of taking it off the table, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. It's off the table. Do we have a motion to adopt it on first reading?
So, Luke.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. It's been adopted on first reading.
New business. Consideration of first reading of an ordinance of the city of Clarksburg to create an ordinance licensing and setting forth restrictions on mobile food vendors.
In, in light of the, um, of the comments that we receive here tonight, might I recommend that some member of council go to table this, and then we can bring it back up in a couple weeks when we, when we table it and do further research.
Second.
All right. Motion table with second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Table.
Consideration of first reading of an ordinance adjusting compensation of city council members.
The, uh, the ordinance, the ordinance dies for lack of a motion.
Council comments?
I will let, uh, Councilman Alphadjo go first.
Thank you. Um, I got a couple of things, and I'll go quick. I think we need to get the music back on the streets. It's springtime, and I've, you know, I've had a couple of people ask me, um, I would like to suggest, uh, that the city make some kind of donation of some sort to the mayor family. I mean, he's one of our people. Uh, I realize there was other, two other houses there too, but, you know, Billy's been with us, and I, you know, if we can do something for the other folks too, I, I think we should. Um, I don't know if this can be done, but, um, I've had some attorneys, I've spoken to a couple of attorneys, I've spoken to the chief of police. Um, you know, we have a curfew for children, kids under sixteen. I think that somehow, some way, we have got to enforce a curfew for people after eleven-thirty walking the streets. Now, if, you know, if you're leaving the Robinson Grand, that's a different story. If you're leaving Pollo Canos or Hart Kitchen, that's a different story. But these people roaming the streets, after what happened Saturday night when the guy threw the cement plant, planter through the male, male's boy's home, front door, it scared the heck out of these guys. And, and, and I think that, I mean, I don't know if we can do it. Chief says that, you know, it's going to take a lot of research to find out, but I think that we should, I mean, I'm not declaring martial law by any means, but I think we need to enforce, if, you know, why are you out walking on the streets at eleven-thirty, just walking around? And so, that's something else that we're, uh, I'm trying to look into, and I've got some attorneys that are looking into it. Once again, if you see something, say something. Folks, if, if you see something happening, no matter how insignificant you think it is, pick up the phone and dial nine one one. Everybody have a nice weekend. Thank you.
Councilman Goll.
I just, uh, I'm glad to see everybody here, uh, especially glad to see, uh, some of the, uh, people that's running for council, uh, shows a great interest, and, uh, I, I wish you all good luck, luck moving forward. That's all I have.
Keith.
Thank you very much for a nice crowd tonight. Thanks for everybody coming. Um, today was a very encouraging day for me. Um, it's, uh, sometimes hard not to look at the negative things, uh, and ignore the positives, but today, we had a beautiful ceremony down at the fire department promoting our new chief, uh, everybody's families, and just a huge crowd out there. That was awesome. Uh, and also, our other officers all got promoted. Very cool, and I went from that to a ribbon cutting in Glen Elk, uh, the Hair Way to Beauty Salon Barber Shop, and, um, that's really important to me. Glen Elk's kind of become my, uh, I don't know, adopted neighborhood. I have two commercial buildings over there. I run my real estate business over there, and I'm getting ready to do something else. That's a surprise. I'm not going to tell you what that is. Um, but I love Glen Elk, and these people will be my neighbors, so it's just nice to see not an empty building. Uh, they bought that whole building, and they have a couple more storefronts. I hope they have more ideas, you know, so, good luck to them. Please, go over there and get your haircut and help them out. Um, really encouraging to see a hundred and nineteen applicants from the public ordinance department. I would encourage the city manager, you know, now's the time. We're coming into spring, you know, we're worried about getting these houses boarded up and stuff like that. We know some guys are going to be retiring pretty soon. Maybe this is the time to go ahead and hire a couple extra ones and just get a little ahead. Um, we can definitely find something for them to do. That's not going to be a problem. Um, food truck guys, Mr. Taco and the Big Kahuna, that's awesome that you came to help us out with that. I'm really kind of surprised that we took a working ordinance from the city, and it had that many problems. Uh, I guess we need to be a little more careful about that, obviously, and look at it a little closer, but thank you guys for being our backstop on that and actually helping us get that correct before we put it out there. And I really want to reiterate, Brad Moore, thank you very much for talking again. You know, I, I've been talking a lot online, and I know a lot of people either like or hate me because of that, but what we talk about a lot online is the demolition program. It's always, you know, something that is a huge point of conversation, and, uh, I've been talking about, and I think people laugh at me sometimes, that I think this round of demolitions could be the light at the end of the tunnel for us, that once we clear that list out, hopefully, we never let it get this big again. The condemned list is still large, but it is encouraging to see a couple coming off that condemned list. Uh, we need to do everything we can for guys like Trinity to, you know, make it so we can take these things the other direction. Nobody's a fan of demolitions. We've had to do it, but at some point, we got to stop it. It's too expensive. We need to find a different solution, and, you know, if we had ten companies like Trinity, or Trinity was ten times bigger, either one would be okay. You know, if we were, you know, fixing these houses, that would be our solution, and it wouldn't be costing the city hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
Um, first, I would like to express my heartfelt sadness for the families involved in the Easter fire, um, and thank the Clarksburg Fire Department for working to combat that fire. Thank goodness no one was hurt. Um, I, I actually am a resident of that neighborhood, and, um, I saw how quickly you responded, and the way you managed, managed that was, um, although it was extremely sad that it was Easter Sunday and, and people were potentially losing their homes. So, thank you for that. Normally, I shoot from the hip and talk straight from my heart, but I had to organize my thoughts on this and write them down, so I'm going to read, which, not the best stat, but, um, around election time, it's natural that people begin to analyze the status of the city. I did this very thing for several years. After I had children, and I began to care more deeply about the community, I was going to raise these young people up in. Over the years, I watched the community seriously decline. There were several reasons that the community around me was spiraling in a quick decline. What I finally realized was, although there were people in positions that made decisions about my community, they were not the only force in control. They did not have the ultimate say. They did not have all the answers. They were not the only thing that impacted the success or decline of my community. I realized that without the involvement of the members of my community, it was destined to fail. I'm aware that we, the citizens of this city, bear responsibility in its very decline. We are the only ones responsible for its rebirth. This council, a particular department within City Hall, nor one citizen, will not be enough to accomplish what we're wanting to achieve. We all have to come together and stop pitting one another against each other. We have to stop putting one another on the defensive. We have to commit to working together and openly listening to one another. When I ran for council, I certainly didn't claim or think I alone could change or fix the multiple issues Clarksburg was facing. I do not have that power. I can sit up here in council chambers, attend a million meetings, make a thousand plans, but without you, the citizens of this city, it's not attainable. To suggest that this council isn't willing to listen, and that this new administration won't try, is maybe an approach that we hide behind. Are we perfect? No. Are we in the beginning phases of rebuilding? Absolutely. We have been set back with offering opportunities for in-person forums due to COVID, but we've been willing. Again, we are not perfect. I am personally telling you, this will not work. Lasting change will not occur if you, the citizens of this city, and this council, do not join together for the betterment of Clarksburg. That's it.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I don't want to go. I can't go follow that.
And, once we were elected, I did not think I was a genius by any means.
Say that to, uh...
I want to send my, uh, my thoughts and prayers to Billy Mayor and Mary. Uh, Billy's a longtime city employee, and that was a devastating, uh, fire that happened, uh, Easter. Um, congratulations to the fire department. Uh, I happened to be there. The, uh, Jimmy and Lily, uh, we got to see the fire department work first, firsthand, and, uh, they did outstanding job. I just didn't realize how hot a fire can get, but it was, uh, it was pretty intense. Um, congratulations to Steve. I'm sorry I missed the, uh, ceremony today. I had a funeral I was attending, but, uh, uh, congratulations along with the captains and lieutenants. I think, uh, the fire department has really, uh, got, got some good folks there, and I, I see good things happening, uh, at the fire department. Um, we had a hundred and nineteen applications. That's, uh, saying that people need jobs, and, and I'm glad that, uh, the city is going to be able to offer a few jobs, uh, to people with, uh, some good benefits and so forth. So, uh, uh, things are looking up, uh, in, in the store department, we could get, in the, in the public works, actually, so we can get, uh, that up to fully staffed and get out there and clean up, uh, this city. Uh, I'm really excited about the position that the manager has advertised for, and I think the deadline is tomorrow for the Director of Economic Development. I think it's a much-needed position. I look for big things, uh, for that, uh, individual, whoever it might be, and I'm looking forward, uh, for that position to be filled, because I think we have a, a lot of issues, a lot of things that need to be done in the future. We got, uh, six point three million coming, uh, which will be a big task. Uh, hopefully, we could have a full-time person on there that can go over some of the needs and, uh, that we want to fill with that money to get Clarksburg in a better position for the future. Um, I'm encouraged with the candidates coming and coming to the council meeting. Uh, that's pretty exciting, and, and, uh, June first, we'll have, uh, three new people on here, and possibly four. Jimmy will hit me when I go out, but at least three new, I'll just say three new council members that are going to be coming on board, and, and that'll be exciting. Uh, we'll miss the three current ones, but, uh, change is always good. So, uh, I, again, I'm looking forward to that, and keep engaged, and keep going out, and keep talking with the people, and bring their needs and wants, uh, when you get on, and July first, and we'll hit the ground running. Um, thank you again. Thanks, everybody, for coming out and, and talking with us tonight.
Well, as usual, it falls to me for the council comments. Uh, first of all, uh, I'll echo the comments that were made about the Easter fire. It was a horrible thing that happened. Um, my thoughts and prayers go out to all the families, including, of course, the mayors. Um, I told this story at the swearing in of the, of the firefighters we promoted earlier today. Um, my, my house burned in nineteen ninety-nine, and, um, my grandparents were, were living with me at the time, and the fact that they were still alive until ten years later is a testament to what firefighters do. They save lives, they're heroes, and I thank God that they were there that day for my grandparents. And, uh, so it was an honor to be there, um, that, today. The, uh, as far as the suggestion about a, a curfew for adults, um, obviously, we'd have, we, um, we'd have to run that past the city attorney. Um, I'm not, I'm not the city attorney, so I'm not going to render a legal opinion, but I am going to say that I, I recall from way back when I was in law school that there was some kind of constitutional problem with that, but I may be wrong, so we'll find out. Um, I would like to, um, commend our, our, our city manager and our police chief. Uh, recently, there was coffee with a cop, the first of several, uh, interactions between the public and the police, uh, to help answer questions. And coming up, very... to help answer questions. And coming up very soon, on April 20th, is chat with Code Enforcement, which is going to be the first time that the citizens will have the opportunity to sit down with the Code Enforcement Office and in an open forum, raise their concerns, get their questions answered, have dialogue. Because honestly, if, if I, in the six years I've been on council, if I hadn't gotten any, any questions about police, any questions about Code Enforcement, I don't know what I would have done with my time, because I think that was all the questions, pretty much. Those are the two areas that people seem to have the most concerns with historically in our city. And I think that by building relationships and by passing information back and forth, hopefully, we can get through a lot of the bumps in the road, and we can work together. Because as Lily said a lot more eloquently than I ever could, we're better when we work together. And so, I'm hoping that these conversations continue long after I'm off council. Also, the very next day, for the first time ever, Clarksburg, on April 21st, is having a Small Business Summit. This is going to be the first time that the city manager, the Finance Department, and other parts of the city are actually going to sit down and have conversations in open forum with small business owners in the city, and those that would like to come to the city to answer their questions, hear their concerns, and possibly make the way we do business better, so that we can be better for business here in Clarksburg. So, I commend the city manager on all three of those things, setting all of those up. I also will, will say, I wasn't intending for my comments to be this long, but I just ended up with several things to say. Tonight is exactly how public comment should work. Tonight, when, when the food truck vendors came here and they had some concerns, they raised the concerns, they made us aware of things that we weren't aware of. We took note, and we took action. And now, we're going to fix the issue so that we can have an ordinance that will truly benefit and be fair to the food truck vendors, because that was the whole reason we were doing this in the first place. So, thank you, thank you both for coming and for giving us your comments. And the last thing I'm going to say is, we all know that $6.3 million is coming. We don't know yet. All the rules and strings that will be attached to it, we can do it, we can't do it. But one thing I do know that we will be able to do, if we, with at least some of it, if we want to, is to improve the broadband infrastructure of Clarksburg. That's my big thing. So, that's what I'm going to be advocating for, for the remainder of my time on city council. There are jobs out there. You can work from home, and, but only if you have enough, good enough internet to do it. And we, the people of Clarksburg are missing out on opportunities because of those, because of the limited internet service we have here. And in fact, my wife, years ago, was one of those people. She actually had, had been provisionally offered a job, and then it was withdrawn because her internet speed wasn't fast enough. And we had the best internet you can buy in Clarksburg at that time. So, I'm hoping that Clarksburg has that, has the infrastructure, just like 100 years ago, you wanted to build roads and have water and sewer lines to make, because that was economic development 100 years ago, and it's still very important. I'm not going to, I'm not going to say it's not. But broadband is the infrastructure of the 21st century. We are now at the moment where we need to do that, just like we need to put down water pipes 100 years ago. So, with that, I'll entertain motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. About to say most things wrong first.